This year, we've had, and over the past few years, we've had a very successful golf program, both boys and girls. And Coach Nick Wallace and Coach Austin and Bird are their coaches. Coach Wallace couldn't be here tonight because of a ballgame his daughter's playing in, I guess, over in Henry County. So, but we wanted tonight to recognize, and if everybody can see over here, this giant trophy that our boys won at the state tournament this year. It's the best finish that they've ever had. But I'm gonna read some things that Coach Wallace sent to me, so you can kind of get an idea of how excellent our golf program is. They, all year long, our players have played against the best public-private schools in the state. They competed in two of Ensworth High School Tournament Series events, Clarksville High School Elite Invitational, Christian County Invitational, Red Hawk Invitational, and the Patriot Classic. Both of our teams have done excellent. And we'll start with the girls' team, women's golf team. Our women's golf team finished with a record of 44, 16, and 1. They were undefeated in district and region play. They won the district tournament for the fifth straight time with a score of 163. The 163 total is the lowest district total in school history. Freshman Natalie Wyatt was district champion and Player of the Year. Sophomore Shelby Smith finished second, and Jason Rose finished fourth. They won the region tournament with a 165. They've won the region tournament three of the last four years. It's the lowest region total in school history. And Ms. Shelby Smith finished second, Natalie finished third, and Jason finished fourth. Jacqueline, I'm sorry. I apologize for mispronouncing the name. That's my fault. Finished fifth in the state tournament. Natalie finished 16th in the state, Shelby 19th, and Jacqueline 35th. Fifth in the state is the second-best finish in the history of Stewart County women's golf. And also on September 21st, Montgomery Bell, Shelby Smith posted the lowest nine-hole round in the history of Stewart County women's golf with a 37. So, let's give our women's... All of our women's golf... The young ladies here, y'all stand up, so everybody can see who you are. Congratulations. And we're looking next year to even improve on that, I hope. The men's golf team. Our men's golf team finished with a record of 77, 20, and 1. They were undefeated in district and region play. They won the district tournament with a 322. And that is the fourth straight district title for SC men's golf. Junior Hayden Smith finished second. Mr. Hayden Howe finished third. Landon Wallace finished fifth. And Bo Atkins finished ninth. We also, the men's golf team, won the region tournament with a 314. That is the fourth straight region title. And Landon Wallace finished second in the region, Hayden finished third, and Hayden finished fourth, and Bo finished 10th. They finished runner-up in the TSSAA State Tournament. And Hayden Howe finished fourth, Hayden finished 10th, Landon 12th, and Bo 37. The state runner-up is the best finish in the history of Stewart County men's golf. In the past four years, we finished third, fourth, third, and second. Hayden Howe qualified for Tennessee Junior Amateur, and will be named All-State for his play in the state tournament. This will be back-to-back years we've had an All-State golfer, Hayden this year and Colin Smith last year. Just a great accomplishment. I don't know how much y'all know about golf, but it is a tough, tough game. It's a, and it takes a lot of dedication and practice. And if the men's team would stand up too, we'd like to recognize you. I don't think we have any savers, Raj. So, we're expecting a state championship. Congratulations.
All right. Item number four is the open public comment. I've got one name, Ms. Pam Whittsle. Before I begin, I'd like to welcome the public and go over the public comment process. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda that should be voted on this evening. You will be given five minutes. I will inform you when your comment expires. Please state your name and address, bird is speaking for the record. All comments should be directed toward me as the chair. As a reminder, the public comments is a, is an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts. This is not a question-and-answer session. If you have any additional questions, I would encourage you to reach out to the board office or one of us outside of the meeting for further discussion. So, please, Ms. Whittsle.
Good evening. My name is Pam Whittsle. I live at 120 Shores Trail in Stewart. I have grandchildren at Stewart County Middle School, two of them. I noticed that on the agenda tonight was the local education compliance report. And I tried to look it up online and was unable to find it. And I'm wondering, that's my question, where can I find it? And when the report for this year is complete, where will that be available? That's it.
Okay. Talk with me after the meeting, if you can, and we'll discuss that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number five is Corrections or Additions to and Approval of Agenda. There are no corrections or additions unless somebody has anything they want to add. And what I'll ask is for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pessow. All those in favor for the approval of the agenda say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. The yeses have it. All right. Item number six is the Approval of the Minutes, which is a regular session from September 14th that was in your packet that you received last week. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the Minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitchew. Second by Ms. Sanders. Is there any discussion about the Minutes? All right. I'll ask for a vote for approval of the Minutes. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. All right. The yeses have that. Item number seven is the Consent Agenda, which is fundraisers and field trips. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda. Motion by Ms. Sanders.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. Discussion. Do you want to talk about any of this?
The fundraisers, there were a few added. And most of them, at the high school, we have some new sponsors of our clubs. But they're normal fundraisers that we have every year. They're all going to be used for the kids to be able to participate in different things and pay for trips to nationals and things like that. But if there's anything specific you'd like to ask about, I'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
Are there any questions about the Consent Agenda? All right. All those in favor to approve the Consent Agenda signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. All right. The yeses have it. All right. Item number eight is Discussion and/or Approval and Approval of the Policy 6.0, 6.4051. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the policy.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders. All right. Let's discuss this. Yes. I'll seek a motion to suspend the rules so Ms. Cheryl Wooten can talk to this change of the policy.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitchew. Second by Ms. Sanders. All those in favor for suspending the rules say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no. All right. The rules are suspended.
Okay. Fabulous. Since I became Director of Health Services, I've looked a lot at our policies and compared those to law. And then, of course, the recommendations from Coordinated School Health, you know, as to what we're supposed to do with the students who have some of these really major disorders. The one that really stood out with us was the seizure, anti-seizure medications. And when I started looking at our policy, we had only mentioned one of the medications, and that was the Diostat. And that is actually a rectal-type medication. And it's a diazepam, which is a Valium product, okay? Or that's just the generic for it. There are actually two other types of medications now that are being used. And one of those, we're seeing a whole lot, it's a nasal medication, which is a whole lot better for the students. We don't have to worry about kids being embarrassed or anything like that if, you know, they had to have the rescue med. So, in looking at our policy, all it said was Diostat. And we have to, if this medication is given, we have to call 911 and EMS takes over care, you know, from our nurses. So, that same polit, or that same procedure needs to be done when any of these other anti-seizure medications are given. So, that is the reason that we want to make these changes. I have not, I did look at Tennessee School Board Association. I have not seen other counties doing this, but it may just, these new nasal medications are so new, I just don't think that, you know, they've recognized it yet. So, same procedure's going to be followed and everything, but we just needed to make sure that we included the other medications as well. So, I went through this line by line. I think Stacy maybe gave you that, those changes. Do I need to go over those or anything? Okay. I think that the update is already done, yes? Do you have any more questions about this? I just think it's a safer thing for us and also for the students, just to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
So, and here, and I'm sorry, real quick.
No.
Real quick question. Okay. I see where it's labeled out the different types in here. So, it's not just anti-seizure medications. It also does say amendo.
Yes, exactly.
In the thing.
Exactly. Yes, under...
That's what I was wondering.
On page two. Yes, the definition, right. It's the definition of these, and then it actually gives the other names.
Yeah. Intranasal, diaz.
Right. And I think that we're going to start seeing more medications going intranasal. In fact, there's actually some talk about epi pens or the epinephrine going nasal. So, you know, that may be something that we have to look at down the road, changing that policy as well. Okay? Thank you.
Any more questions from Ms. Wooten? Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion, I'll seek a motion to unsuspend the rules.
Motion, unsuspend the rules.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders. All those in favor in unsuspending the rules? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, no. All right. The rules are now not suspended anymore. We'll say it like that. Any other discussion about the change of this policy? All right. I'm going to ask for a, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Do I need a roll call on that? Okay. All those in favor in changing the policy, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, no. All right. The yeses have it. All right. Item number nine is the Approval of the 141 Budget Amendments. I'll seek a motion for the approval of those, of those amendments.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pessow. Second by Ms. Sanders. All right. Let's talk about them a little bit. We don't, okay. All right. Mr. Lamb, you can speak.
The first page of the 141 amendments, these are all part of the Innovative Schools Grant that we got, that all the school systems in the state got. It's through CTE. This is just, it doesn't change the bottom line of the budget at all. All this money was originally in the budget. We're just moving line items to comply with the latest guidance on how to spend the ISM grant money. So, it has zero effect on the bottom line of the budget. The second page is new money. It is a special education grant that Ms. Robin got for $21,229.82. She's going to use that to pay for a special ed assistant. And that's the salary and the benefits that go along with that. If you have specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. Or if Ms. Robin needs to clarify anything, she's here.
The grant, is it just for one year, or is it for, is it reoccurring?
It's reoccurring.
Very good.
What school are we looking at for the assistance?
It'll be Dover Elementary, because it's a special ed pre-K grant. So, we're going to use, since the state is wanting us to include our special needs pre-K kids with our typically developed kids. And so, this assistant will go into those VPK classrooms to help.
So, if they could, yes. Okay?
And this is just for one assistant, or is it multiple?
One.
One.
I would love to have, but there's not enough money. We've had a bit of...
So, with the grant, I mean, if, I mean, I guess the assistant understands, I mean, there is a possibility that we might not get the grant. I'm assuming if it goes away.
Now, the state told us it's recurring.
Reoccurring.
So...
So, we don't have to worry about that. Okay.
So, is this, with it being a grant, do we have to, any restrictions on how we hire, who we hire, special ed assistant wise, that don't have to be certified?
Any questions? Any other questions? All right. I might ask for a roll call on this. Madam Secretary.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
Mr. Pessow?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Yes. All right. The minute's passed. Item number 10 is Approval of the 142 Budget Amendments. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the 143 Budget Amendments.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pessow. All right. Discussion.
Dr. Duncan will speak. Those are federal amendments, so if it's okay, Dr. Duncan can do that. Talk to those.
Most of these are my consolidated funding app, the Title I, Title II, Title IV money, just carryover from FY '23, putting that into the FY '24 budget. Looking at the Title I, you know, dropping funds there for instructional supplies, the other salaries and wages that would cover after-school tutoring at our Title I schools, and then benefits. Down at Title II, that's professional development money, so the carryover rolling over into professional development for FY '24. Title IV, in instructional supplies, robotics there on the 711-00599, other charges, that's the pay robotics teams, competition fees, that $1,000. And then 721-30499, other supplies and materials, $3,500. We use that money to support our PBS programs in all of our schools and our literacy nights, so the supplies that we buy to support those and our PBS coaches. Other funds there for staff development. And then the one additional one, 801 down there, CTE Perkins money for Ms. Baggett, our CTE program. She had an adjustment to her FY '24 allocation of $10.97. And then she made a few line transfers to drop some more funds into instructional supplies.
Also, 142, special ed, for Ms. Crane, will be the next page in the pack.
Okay. So, for mine, I've got my 901, my 142-901. Those are all allocations and carryover for the 2024 budget. The same thing with my IDA pre-K, allocations and carryover. That's just been budgeted for this year. And then my third page is the remaining amount of my American Relief Plan money. It has to be spent and finalized by December 31st. I just needed to move some money to pay out some things that we purchased prior to September 30th. So, there's no new money. I just moved it around to cover those costs.
So, Robin, on page three, you said this money has to be spent by December 30th versus this year?
Yes. It had to be allocated by September 30th, which I did.
Oh, okay.
It was COVID money.
Okay.
And so, it has to be, it has to be expended by December 30th.
So, the credit is what's going into 24, fiscal year '24, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, how many? Is that for the whole year or school year?
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at special ed assistants, speech pathologists, special ed assistants during 72,000. Is that looking at...
Yes. That's for this school year.
That's for this school year?
Mm-hmm.
And we, I guess I'm asking, we have that many assistants. How many, how many special ed assistants do we have?
Oh, gosh. I'm going to have to ask that. I would say...
You can get it to me later. I just...
Okay. We've got a lot.
I mean, yeah.
We have a lot.
Okay. And then speech pathologists, we have two, correct?
We have one licensed SLP and a speech teacher, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? Good questions. All right. I'll ask for a roll call. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
Mr. Pessow?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
All right. Item number 11 is the Approval of the TESA Accountability Report. I'll seek a motion for the approval of that accountability report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pessow. Second by Ms. Sanders. All right. We'll have a discussion.
Okay. And I may have to have Dr. Duncan weigh in on this a little bit, because he did the bulk of the work on this. With the new funding formula, Tennessee Investment Student Achievement that the legislature has put forward, that we're now working under, that's replaced the old, y'all probably remember the old BEP plan. Heard those names now. It's called this. One of the things that we're required to do is to have an accountability report in which we lay out the goals to make improvement on our third grade and other things as far as their achievement. One of the goals that's required, and I'm just going to hit the highlights, because there's a lot in this. One of the goals that's required, and we must pursue the goal of 70% or more of the district's third-grade students to score met expectations or exceeded expectations on the English language arts portion of TCAP tests. This goal must also detail the district's goal to increase third-grade ELA proficiency rates by 15% of the gap over the next three years, starting with 22, 23 TCAP results, which we just did last year. And the district stated goal of at least 70% of those students being proficient in ELA. Now, you were given the packet where this template was filed with the state. This past year, we had 31.1% of third graders who were, who met expectations or exceeded expectations. So, we went through and we have made goal statements, four of them. One is 70% by the year 2030, 70% will score proficient on third-grade ELA TCAP. I know that sounds like a long way off, but the, these numbers that we, and the goals that we set, we did with the guidance from the Department of Education. You know, it would be unrealistic for us to think that we're going to go from 31 to 70% in one year. That's just, it's just not, and nobody's doing that. There's nobody in the state that's doing that. So, these, these goals were, we were given guidance to set these goals where they're achievable. And that's going to be what we're going to work for. And we're already working towards that. And we're already seeing in our benchmark testing a great deal of improvement in our, in our reading proficiency or in our ELA proficiency. Goal Statement 2, and I'm not going to read all of it to you, but you, because you have it in your packet. Increased proficiency percentage per grade on 3 through 8. Math TCAP, ELC on Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry by 27, 28. Third grade at 50%, fourth grade 58.1%, fifth grade 50%, sixth grade 51.5%, seventh 50.4%, eighth 32.2%, Algebra 25.2, and Algebra 2 33, and Geometry 33.9. Goal Statement 3 was to increase proficiency rates in all across the board in ELA. And then Goal Statement 4 is that we have at least 55% of our high school graduates will have a ready graduate status by the 27, 28 school year. And if you have any specific questions, we can, we can answer those the best that we can. But what this is basically doing, this, the idea behind this or the theory behind it is all this money that TESA, and they have increased funding, that this is going to tie the money we're receiving and then the outcomes that we have, so people can see how we're spending our money and what the, what the results are of where we're putting our resources. Because the better you do, the more money you get from the state, the way this system is set up. Any questions?
Well, can we put it on, is it going to be on the school website?
We put it out.
Okay.
And it was, and we had a public, we had a public comment section. And we had a deadline on November 1st.
Yep.
And we put it out, and we had public comment. And after public comment, we brought it to, we sent it into the state, but we have to have y'all approve it. The state's already got it. We have to have the board approve the amendments that y'all have received.
This might, I'm not sure if this is for you or Ben. They're part of the, the goal and part of the procedures you're going to do, right, is high doses, low ratio tutoring. Are we getting the extra money to, are we, let me see how, where did, are we adding faculty to do that? Or are we, we just, are we able to do it now?
We're able to do it now. We're, in fact, fourth graders who did, who were in, who were in danger of failing, of being retained, and they went to, some went to summer school, or a lot went to summer school. They're, they're receiving high dosage tutoring.
Tutoring now. Okay.
Because they have to show adequate growth, or we'll have to retain them at fourth grade.
Okay.
Those, even the kids who went through all the process of summer school, they still have to show that they are making progress.
And will this follow the third, so the fourth graders now that were third grade last year? Or is it third grade every year that comes through? Like, second graders?
You got third, you go through the third grade retention.
Yep.
And then if you don't meet the expectations, let's say. There's different ways to get to go on to fourth grade. And that might be going to summer school, and Dr. Duncan, help me if I miss something. Summer school, it may be, summer school and tutoring. But there are exemptions to it. If you have an IAP and things like that, you're not, you're taken out of that. So, yes, they're receiving tutoring now, but they have, if they have to have tutoring, they also have to show adequate growth in fourth grade to go on from fourth to fifth.
Yeah.
But our, our hope is that if we're doing what we set out to do, we won't have many in third grade that are in danger of being retained.
Okay.
I think right now, Dover Elementary, we have 15 children in fourth grade that are receiving high dosage tutoring, correct? 15?
Yes, sir.
And I think, how many at North Stewart?
Four.
Four at North Stewart. And the tutoring's being done by certified teachers. Yeah. I mean, but that's, that's, that's part of the regulation. I'm going to make sure I get that out there. That's in addition to the children that get RTI every day.
Yeah.
And whatever tier, I think we have excellent Tier 1 instruction. That's just regular classroom instruction, too.
That was all I had.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of approval of the TESA Accountability Report signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Item number 12 is the Approval of the LEA Compliance Report. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the LEA Compliance Report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Ms. Sanders. Discussion.
Every year, this is a, and I don't want to call it a paperwork drill, but that's kind of what this, we do this every year, the compliance report. Local education, and I'll just read to you what the Department of Education says about this report and what we, what our responsibilities are. Local education agency LEAs are required to comply with all federal and state education laws and state board of education rules. The annual compliance report is one mechanism the department uses to ensure education laws and rules are faithfully executed. Commissioner of Education is charged with taking corrective action when an LEA is not compliant with those laws and rules, or is not following the department-approved compliance plan. We have to report, we have to turn this report into the state by November 30th of each year. And we are required to carefully check the status of its compliance with all federal and state education laws and SBE rules. Top department monitors and verifies LEA compliance via multiple data sources, education information system, EIS, internal program managers, and consider those sources in making a final determination of the compliance. So basically what we do is we, we sign off that we, as far as we can, as we know, that we are following all things. And leading up to this, since August 1st, we have a lot of interaction with the state in all different areas to make sure that in EPLAN and other things, that what we're doing, we're being compliant. Doesn't mean that something may not happen at some point where we make a mistake, but is, is just ensuring that we are following the laws that, that are put forth for us.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on that? All right.
Yeah, y'all know I'm going to ask some-
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, so this is all federal state laws, any, even to the littlest thing. I know we have the Tennessee Board that helps us, lawyers, making sure that we're staying in check. Is there anything else that goes into it, other than, you know, principals, director, school board, and all of our lawyers checking everything, looking at the policies?
That, I mean, we're, we're doing what the state asks us to do.
Yeah.
And they ask us to make sure that we are following. And again, you have to understand, if we turn something in that we're doing in a program to the state on EPLAN, that's our, I'm trying to explain, I try to explain what that is. That's like, anything that we do, spend money, or, or any programs that we do, we have to go through, we have to put these in with the state through what's called EPLAN. If there's something wrong, they reject it, and we have to fix it. So as, as of right now, everything that we've done so far this year, we are in compliance.
Okay.
That doesn't mean something couldn't happen at some point when we're not in compliance. Somebody makes a mistake, they do something wrong, we will hear it from the state. And we will have to either, we'll have to show what we're doing to correct it, and that's basically how, how this works.
Yeah, that's what I saw the example, you know, non-conformity, I guess is what it said or something. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of approval of the LEA compliance report, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed no? All right. Item number 13 is the approval of the 24-25 calendar. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the 24-25 calendar.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pessell, second by Mr. Gillum. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Excuse me.
Give, you give your spiel about-
Okay, we, we sat down with all the administrators, representatives from the faculty, and each school had community members on the, to give input on this. We always go by the same guidelines that were set forth way before I became director, that we would not start school before August 1st, correct? August 1st, which we will start next year on Thursday, August 1st, for a half day. Then we'll have a no-student day on the 2nd. We will have a fall break, a full week fall break, actually it's six days next year, because we're going to back our, we're going to put our parent-teacher conferences on the day before fall break like we did this year. And that way the kids get a one and a half day extra on fall break. Veterans Day, of course, is covered, almost three weeks at Christmas, and then spring break, and then will be, the last day of school next year will be May 23rd. And I'll answer any questions.
Mike, is graduation still, because I didn't eat?
We haven't set graduation on this, this, for next year yet.
Okay. I knew I didn't see it on there, so.
We usually wait till right before school starts, with Mr. Gray and myself, and all of us will talk about what's there.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of the approval of the 24-25 calendar, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed no? All right. Item number 14 is the approval of the sales surplus item, 2006 Chevrolet pickup. I'm not going to read the bin. I'll seek a motion for the approval of the sale of the surplus item.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Ms. Fitchew. All right, discussion?
We just got a new used vehicle, got a great deal on one. This one was about ready to go out of service. Anybody interested in a 2006 Chevrolet with about 300,000 miles on it?
Is that the white one?
Yes, it's one of the white ones that we have finally, we need to rest.
It served its purpose.
Yes, 17 years.
All right. Let me get a roll call on that one.
Mr. Pessell?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
All right. Item number 15 is the discussion of the director evaluation. We don't need a motion on this one, we're just going to talk about it. We're needing to do an evaluation on the director, and we, in the past, last year, we had TSBA handle that. I'd really like to have them do that again. They would send a petition to each one of you, to your emails, and you have so many days to respond, and then they compile all the information and, and get that back to us. Last year, I think I got it back to all of you pretty, pretty fast, so y'all could see what the results was, and that's what I'd like to do this year. But I'm open for any kind of discussion on that. This, this would preclude us voting on a contract for the director. So in the next, the next board meeting, we'd like, I'd like to discuss the contract for the director, so this would be before that, and then we need to do this before we do that.
Yeah, I think I should bring in somebody from out, let that work out that way.
All right. Any other discussion about that? We don't need to really vote about it, but y'all, everybody okay with TSBA handling that at least now? All right. And that's what we'll do, any more discussion about it? All right, thank y'all. Item number 16 is the director's report.
I don't have a whole lot, but I do want to commend our finance department. We had a clean audit this year from the comptroller, again. I think, how many, I think five or six years in a row, we've had that. And the county had a clean audit overall, so, but we're really proud of how we're physically responsible, and Mr. Wynn and Ms. Gina and others in the board office do an excellent job in that. I'm not a finance guy, so I depend on people like, like Mr. Wynn and, and his staff to take care of these things, so we're real proud of, of having a clean audit. And, you know, we, we try to take care of the money and make sure that we're spending it where it needs to be spent. The only other thing I wanted to do today is mention, is I'd like to say thank you to all our veterans. I believe we have only one on the school board as a veteran, Mr. Kyle Pessell. And Kyle, thank you for your service, and we appreciate it. And had a great Veterans Day program today at Dover Elementary that I was able to attend. And then yesterday, North Stewart, which I couldn't, I was in a meeting, but they had a, from what I saw, an excellent Veterans Day parade. So we're, we're proud of that, proud of our, all of our principals and assistant principals and the job that they're doing every day. Our schools are, we feel are, are, are getting better all the time, and that's, that's the goal, is always trying to improve. And if we see something we're weak at, we're going to work to make it a strength. And so I know everybody that today was looking forward to this three-day weekend that we're starting at the end of this meeting, so that's all I have.
Right. Item number 17 is announcements. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about, any board member? All right. Item number 18 is adjournment. Lana makes a motion for adjournment, second by Mr. Gillum. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed no?